Oh, he's not gonna be here? So, do, can you do this?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located at the entrance of the room. The first item is discussion regarding conflict of interest reporting form. And Patrick, you're gonna take this since Mike's not here.
Can I hand it this out?
Mike.
This is something recommended by our internal auditor, Mike Warren Key. Just a conflict of interest reporting form. It just simply says, "The employees for the county have read the county conflict of interest and anything that, you know, would pertain to Douglas County, you know, what Douglas County does, then you let us know where it is." So, it's something that, that every organization should have. So, this is something that will be presented for county board approval in an upcoming meeting, but everybody has the time to take a look at it and see if there's any questions before we put it out there.
Anybody have any questions?
I've got a question. Once in a while, I have a client who's in for something, maybe an accessory or something else, and I, you know, I have to abstain. So, how do I list all those people? I can't anticipate who'd be... That's all right. I'll ask Mike.
Yeah. He put this together and I think my best way to... I don't think you need to list it. I just think you just, if you have a financial interest, you get to say...
Well, I don't have a financial interest that I represent if you have a relationship.
Well, it just says, "Do you have a financial interest?"
They don't pay me, so that's all right.
Yeah. But yeah, if anybody has any specific questions, either ask me, and I'll ask Mike or contact Mike directly.
And that's what I was gonna ask. Is this gonna be different for county board members or county board members use this as well?
I think everyone will be using it.
Okay.
So, that's it.
And where's the Conflict of Interest Policy Act?
I think we have, we don't have any, you know, civil services or conflict metrics in civil service.
There's an ethics policy. There's an ethics policy, but to how, I mean, when I was working in banking, the conflict of interest policies were different than the ethics policies, and I didn't know if the county board had passed one or a resolution that would apply to all employees, not just civil service.
I'll talk to Mike and see. If we don't, then we'll call up with him.
Okay. Sounds good.
Normally, like on these places, even nonprofits have this. So, if you sit on their boards, they'll send out on an annual basis the conflict of interest policy and then a sheet like this that says you've read it and then you list all your affiliations.
And there's no timeline to get this passed, so we'll get all the wrinkles ironed up before presenting it to the board.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay. We'll move to item two, the non-union salary increase recommendation discussion.
Just passing out a memo for the commissioners. This is based upon our discussion that we had at the last HR committee meeting, which was that we were gonna focus on making any changes to salary structures to give us a little bit more time to, to look into that, to hopefully make those effective with the fiscal year and the budgeting cycle. So, this recommendation is just what is just the presentation that has been done pretty much every year, and it's just the annual adjustment to the salary structures themselves. We're basically recommending a three percent for employees that are on pay scales with steps that are non-union, a four percent increase for those that are on ranges. Again, that's because those on ranges don't have any mechanism such as a step to advance within the range. The projected cost of that is $752,000. And then, the, we also recommended a four percent for the legal and court employees, which they are non-civil service, non-union, but that's what we've done in the past. We've made a recommendation for those groups, county trained public defender, district court, juvenile court, others such as physicians, the psychiatrists over at DCHC, the chief deputies, and so forth. And those costs are all itemized there as well. And then, the last paragraph basically is just stating that our long-term strategy is to proceed with what we had talked about with strategic planning, but it's not gonna happen now.
Good plan.
I think I know the answer to this, but on these, the top ones where you talk about three and four percent and all that stuff, did you look at topables or did you look at what our employees or the others are being paid or what was the basis for that?
That's a very good question, Commissioner Boyle. The three percent is just based upon that the three percent is about an average. It might be a little more than that for the union groups. That's what they're getting. Those employees are on steps for the most part. And then, we added just the one percent, again, just to recognize that the range employees, they don't have steps, so the only increases they get is this annual increase that's given through the structure.
Okay. So, the three percent will be in addition to a step, right?
Right. Just like it is for the union.
So, if the step is three percent, then it's a six percent increase.
That's correct.
Okay. Is that figured into the 752?
The step is not. That, that's just a structural increase to the, to the pay range.
Okay. So, what do you think the step will add to it?
It, they vary, but they're right around four percent, four and a half, which is about the same as we see with the union groups.
Well, to figure that out, I have to take my shoes off. So, do you have any idea?
It, oh, the cost with the step?
Right.
That would be another... So, we'd probably say easily 1.5 million total.
I think that's what it was last year.
Okay. And that doesn't include the offices that are listed below, right?
No, that's right. That, those, those numbers are all itemized there too, and those individuals also are not on steps.
Right.
So, this is just their pay increase the same.
Okay. I'm sorry, but what's the total of those offices?
All added up?
Well, I'm sorry to do that to you.
Um, it's probably thirty, sixty, seventy, about 600,000.
Okay, seven.
Seven.
Okay.
Thank you, Claire.
So, we're talking about two point, or no, yeah, 2.2 million total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what's the, what's the chief deputy? I don't get that. Every chief deputy or all chief deputy?
Yeah, the chief deputies, the...
Everyone or all of them?
That, oh, the thirty-eight to five twenty-eight, that would be all of the chief deputies as a group.
That's the total that they split?
Yes.
They split that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from anybody on this?
I'd like to know, do we have a budget?
In the budget, there is three percent of total payroll budgeted for increases. And what it was, total payroll is about 110 million or so. So, that would mean there would be like 3.3 million in the budget.
Commissioner Morgan?
The challenge here, I think, is, you know, these are the individuals that aren't a member of a union, right? And then, you know, I think, Karen, when you look at the union situation with the steps and everything, you see, and you mentioned this, the pay raises of six to nine percent, basically. So, I'm being very candid. I'm sitting over here, I'm thinking, why don't I uporganize, perhaps to be in a community? So, I mean, that's what makes being very, I know, very, you laugh at...
I've never thought about that's organizing, but my, my force is to...
No, I was thinking if I was in a different...
Yeah. There, there's about 300 employees in this non-union group, and there's maybe a handful, we'll say 10, that might not be able to be, participate in a union because of the fact that they're department directors and they have input into union negotiations, but outside of that...
But they could form their own union.
They, they theoretically could, that's correct. But everybody else of the 300, you could figure 290 of them could definitely form a union and, and then negotiate with commissioners for benefits and salaries. Yeah, and, and Patrick's correct. Then the department directors, I suppose they could also form a union and be represented as well. So, I mean, that, that could potentially be an outcome. Yeah.
And the county administrator.
And the county administrator.
Commissioner, I wanted to ask, Mr. Riley's here. I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't think you will. But you and the county attorney have a dollar amount here. If you plan, if you grab the 175,035, you would distribute that based on your dress much to employees?
Right. Well, when I submitted the budget request originally back in April, I had a spreadsheet with salaries on it, which were my projections, and they were roughly comparable to what the county attorney's salaries were. I don't keep track on a weekly basis, you know, with people getting retired or get a different job, how that money redistributed. I honestly, I only do it at budget time.
Yeah.
So, I can look my employees in the eye and say, "We're, we're close. We're not gonna quizzle over 600 bucks a year or eight hundred bucks a year or a thousand bucks a year, but when it starts getting to 12, 13,000, you know, someone will come to me and say, 'Hey, what the hell's going on? Statute says we're supposed to be getting the same.'" So, that, that's kind of where I, I went, and I believe, you know, the 175 would put it even with them, but I don't know what they'll do if they get 261, you know? I mean, they've got more employees than us.
Same thing.
But I don't, again, I don't know the exact number on how many more they have. I know they have a lot of grant employees down there too that we don't, we're the bad guys, so we don't get too much grant money, you know? I mean, you know, if I understand, we get a lot of victims' rights stuff. That's how they get a lot of the DV investigative stuff. I'm not slamming, but good for him.
Right. Well, that's, you make a very important point, though. You know, we need to make sure these are equalized, that the statute says so.
Yeah.
Right. The statute says that the offices are equalized, largely because, just as Mr. Riley said eloquently, they really don't have any applicants, so somebody better speak up for them, you know, and everybody else. So, I wanna make sure that the offices are equalized, and if you can deter, I'd like to ask you to please determine that and work with Mr. Riley or whoever he designates and check with the county attorney as well, be sure that they're equalized. And if there's a change, let us know. Thanks. But as far as giving out the money, do you decide somebody gets four percent, somebody else gets three?
Okay. It's based on experience, responsibility. You know, I mean, when people leave that have been there for 15, 18, 20 years, then I have to find someone that's in our mid-range and say, "Okay, you're gonna start doing murder cases now, you're gonna start doing..." And just by way of example, we have 135 sexual assault felonies open right now. I mean, I've never seen the numbers like they are now, and I'm sure clients are comparably increased too. And to be honest with you, 20 years ago, our caseload was a few murders, a couple of rapes, a couple of robberies, tons of burglaries, tons of orgeries. Now, it's either things that the legislature turned into felonies, like third offense graffiti and, you know, silly things like that. And then, murders, drive-bys, sexual assaults and robberies. So, it's, it's really, the numbers are staggering. And of course, the increased DV cases too, because now people are reporting things that they previously did not. And those are, so, I mean, these numbers are... I, I gotta tell you, this is the first time in my career in the last year, year and a half that I've kind of felt a little overwhelmed. The Holy American, we got murders coming out of our ears. You know, Mark Foxall told me a couple of months ago, they had like 42 people in jail waiting murder trials.
Right.
Yeah, you're at that meeting too, with that criminal justice management thing, yeah. And I don't see it changing. So, and we need to make sure that the experienced lawyers that we have in our office, we keep some of them sent to stay, because, believe me, if we start screwing this stuff up, it's gonna cost everybody in the long run a lot more. You know, retrials and, you know, I mean, knock on wood, we haven't had anything like that happen. But as the numbers increase, you know, I, I can't tell you how many times in the last six months that some lawyers have come to me and said, "Oh, crap, I'm really swamped." You know, that didn't used to happen.
No.
So, I'm, I'm a little nervous about the way things are heading.
Well, if you come to a conclusion about something that needs to be changed, whether it's number of employees or frankly paying, I shouldn't say this publicly, but paying more for the people you have to keep them, I think, I think most of us would certainly, we listen very carefully.
Well, I, you know, I just had a lawyer that had been there for 25 years leave us, and I had an option. I said, "I can either hire, kind of a lateral hire, since they're someone out in the community that can come in and, you know, take, you know, higher salary, or hire two people at starting pay." And we kind of worked the number, and we decided, right now, we're better off getting two, two new people than hiring an experienced person, and I may live to regret that, but I, I had to make the call, you know? And, you know, I, I hope I don't have to knock on your door too soon, but we don't even have your room left either. I don't wanna go to this Keyline Building's crap anymore.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess I'm giving you a heads up and...
Well, that's good to know. I, just from the numbers I've heard from the correction facility, and I, you know, I watch what you do, and so I just appreciate what you do, and you have always run a very tight ship, and if you have to, you know, if you have to go the full route and hire that other person who's experienced additionally too, I think you, we would have it in mind.
I do always have, always have, and I won't ask enough, I'm really worried.
We know that. Okay. But thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this? And again, just so everyone knows, this plan that we have in front of us is after three various, various discussions about the pay plan that was presented, and we thought it needed a little bit more time. And so, I know some won't necessarily agree with doing what we did last year again this year, but it's the fairest thing to do and the right thing to do, so we can plug a little bit more time into the, the longer range plan. So, any other questions or comments on that one? Well, good job. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the discussion of dental only coverage, and this again is another conversation that we had briefly and that I wanted to have again, because there's been employees over the last three years, just a handful, not many, that have been asking us to give them an option to pick onlys within our plan. So, like right now, you can't just pick dental. If you have insurance with someone else's, like you're covered under your wife's or your husband's, or you have your own private, you, you have to pick our medical in order to get the dental. So, you can't just pick one. So, when that happened in the past, we were told that we really couldn't offer just the one, and then we did further investigating, and Aon said, "Well, yes, you can." And so, when I talked to Kathy and Karen, they felt it was too overwhelming to do it during this open enrollment, because it was so close to the open enrollment time. And as, I guess, a compromise, if you will, the discussion led to possibly at the beginning of the year, switch to letting employees that want just the dental come in and pick just the dental. And so, we wanted to have that discussion, because then that does lead to the further conversation of, well, what if they want vision only? Well, what if they, well, I guess that was the only one, vision and dental. So, I personally would like it to happen at the beginning of the year for these employees. I think that over the course of time when we've said we couldn't do it, we were wrong and we can, and there are ups and downs, there's unknowns and knowns, if we move this way. And that's where I want the further discussion. I don't want the wall that says, "No, we're not gonna do this." I want the wall broke down to say, "How can we offer this to the employees, knowing the good, the bad and the ugly?" Okay?
Yeah. I, I, I think that it's, it's very doable for us to offer all of these coverages independent of each other and to offer them at different tier levels even. The issue really comes down to what's the best timing to do it. And, and I think our office is still maintaining that. We would like to see it happen at open enrollment for 2018. And, and the reason is not that we can allow people to add dental now that don't have our insurance or to add vision that don't have ours. The issue is more, there may be people that have our medical insurance now that took our medical insurance when maybe all they wanted was the dental, and we can't really let them out of that medical coverage now that they've already enrolled, because they have to have a qualifying life event. And also, people have set their flexible spending accounts based upon their medical expenses and so on and so forth. And, and that's why our office, I think, is still of the opinion that we would like to see it happen with the next full open enrollment. Now, that's a full year away, and I know that that may be a long time to wait for for some of these individuals that probably feel like they've been waiting already for several years. But I think that from our perspective, otherwise, we're going to have to do a special open enrollment, which we can do, but my concern is going to be what happens with the employee that says, "I don't want my medical anymore." You're letting the person now sign up for dental, and I just want dental only too, but I can't get out of my medical. And I think that's, well, well, we might end up making some employees happy, but in the process, we might make some other employees unhappy. So, I don't know what the best approach is, but that's why we were thinking that open enrollment 2018 would make sense. We can get all of it worked out, we can get it all communicated to the employees, and we can then make sure we have every, everything tested as far as the software to make sure that, say, they choose to get, maybe they choose single, single medical but family dental, and then maybe they want vision, or maybe they just want vision and then family dental or any combination thereof. But I agree, most organizations allow you to pick and choose from the various products at whatever tier level you want, and, and we can accommodate that.
Commissioner Boyle? I'd like to see it implemented as soon as possible. I think it makes sense, and it's kind of a cafeteria plan, sort of, but I think, I don't know what else they'd get besides dental, I don't know, hearing aids or something or vision. I don't know where, where everything fits into that, which you could buy off cafeteria. But can a person who chose, who already has a health insurance policy, say, I signed up for health, which I did, health insurance, and I did choose dental, but what if I signed up for health insurance and did not choose dental? Can I add dental?
Well, if you, if you chose health insurance, you automatically got dental.
Okay, that's what I know.
And, and, you know, that's where our concern is, is we may have employees that signed up for medical because they wanted dental, but now that we're gonna offer dental standalone, we can't let them out of the medical.
Right, right. Okay.
And dental insurance.
Yeah.
And then, do we have any numbers of how many there are? Is, you know, are we talking about, you know, 200 people? Are we talking about 20?
I'm gonna let Kathy address how many people that we've heard from that have expressed, because she's been here a long time and this has been going on for a while.
I've only had a couple of people come approach me, you know, that just wanted dental only.
Yeah.
Now, I think when you open it completely up and let them pick whatever tier level, whatever they want, that I think you're gonna be all over the board.
Is that bad?
Right now, it would be for, at least for me, because I'm working nights and weekends as it is for the Blue Cross and Blue Shield implementation.
Okay. What if, what if we didn't, couldn't do it right away, but we did it in a reasonable period of time, you know, four months from now or something?
The thing is, is they wouldn't be able to change their flex spending account.
I'm sorry.
I mean, they would not be able to change any flex spending account. You have to enroll in flex spending during your open enrollment process unless you have a qualifying family status change. So, if somebody put too much money into their flex spending that picked medical, you know, they wouldn't be able to reduce that.
Well, I think if you told them that, I said, "Well, you can't reduce your, you know, stuff, so maybe do you wanna wait till next year to do this?" I mean, then that's their choice. You know, they can't do the whole nanny thing totally. I mean, they have to make their own decisions, but this is what happens if you do this, and if you don't wanna do this, then wait till then. I don't know.
I'm definitely not opposed to doing it.
Yeah.
I'm just, for lack of a better word, opposed to doing it now. To do another open enrollment, it's, right now, it's a real, honest to God, it's a nightmare right now with, with the Blue Cross implementation. And I just don't know how we can accurately get to touch every employee again to say, "Hey, you have this opportunity again." I mean, it's like going through another open enrollment.
Well, and we would only really have to be reaching out to people that don't have medical, because we're not gonna let the people in medical out of the medical. We can't do that without a qualifying life event. It's not legal. So, what we would end up having to do is go to the people that don't have medical and say, "Do you wanna enroll now in dental?"
But it'd be the end of the world if we notified them, you know, in April or May and said that this is coming next time. Is that too long to wait? And really, they've been waiting a long time, but maybe that makes a lot more sense, 'cause then they'd be right at the same threshold, where you get medical and all this other stuff, or you get dental and this kind of stuff, and you, this is what you put in your savings account. I mean, it all happens at the same time instead of these numbers.
Yeah. I think, we, I think we can do a lot to promote it and make it a very positive change, you know?
This'll be offered next time?
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that, Ryan?
Well, you know, if I have to wait, I wait. I mean, here's the deal. When I first brought it up, it was the wall.
Yeah.
Then the compromise came, and now it's, the compromise isn't there anymore, and now we're back to waiting. So, and I get it. I mean, I get how busy you were with open enrollment. Don't think I don't, I do.
Well, and it wasn't just open enrollment was part of the problem. I mean, we had other projects going on too for end of year, but yes, I, I appreciate you being understanding.
Yeah. So, when those, when that's over, then to do this at the first of the year, I thought, "Well, yeah, okay, that's, that's a good compromise, I can deal with that." But then, when we first brought that up, that was kind of ex-nayed, and it went right to open enrollment again. And so, my, 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 again, compromise to wait would be that there's not a huge amount of employees that are banging at the door, but it is, for employees that are banging at the door, it's important to them. And so, again, for the time that we just automatically said, "No, we can't do it," and we find out that we can, I think we owe it to them to, to do it. So...
Okay. You're not through?
Well, I, again, I guess, you know, if, if we have to have it wait till the next open enrollment, then I guess we'll have to wait till the next open enrollment. I won't be happy about it, but, you know, we'll have to wait till the next open enrollment.
Well, let me ask a real, may I question? Somebody's gonna throw something at me, but is it possible for us to buy a contract with someone who sells dental insurance and then offer it to employees and they do it on their own? I mean, is that, I see Kathy going, what was that? I mean, are you, is there some way that we could short-circuit the system and get them the coverage and us made a part of the premium or something? Any way we can do anything like that?
It's, it's pretty much the same, it's pretty much, that's a good question. It's pretty much the same, same issue, yeah.
Okay.
And right now, our insurance, our dental insurance is through...
Delta Dental.
Delta Dental. We've been with them for a while, and we just went, you know, if we do the open enrollment, if we decide to go sooner than open enrollment for all benefits, if the, if the commissioners feel that it's best to do something early, then I, I would respectfully request that we wait until after the end of March, because we have 1095 forms and electronic transmission and all that falls right here with these two people and .com. And we're kind of under the gun to get those out, so it's, it's a matter of manpower, but if we wanted to look at, if we feel that it's important and the commissioners decide that that's what you wanna do, then, you know, we could maybe do something in the, you know, May timeframe.
Any other?
Well, I, you know, I understand what Christopher said. I have been on the front line of hearing those things, and I can understand her frustration, 'cause I've been through those sort of things too. So, I mean, I would, I would lean toward doing this as quickly as you can and trying to offer some sort of help to, you know, clerical help or something to help you get through this. That's what I would prefer, if people have been waiting for several years. I don't like the end of March or whatever, that's too long.
It's not so much... It's not so much clerical help as it is, um, it's oracleresources.com resources. And we're already, um, contracted. Um, we have our full-time person that works with us from dot com. Um, and we've already had, they've already had to contract with another person to help us with the Blue Cross Blue Shield implementation. So we have two oracle resources right now. So I guess if they, if, you know, if that's what we would be looking at if we do it before then.
Well, I think we need to revisit our computer contract seriously.
Dot com, you talking about?
Yeah, you, you, you were opposed to it to begin with.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just had, we just had a problem with, uh, the building commission where they couldn't get an audit done because of oracle. Now, they're on a terrible deadline.
Oh, well, dot com and oracle are two different things.
Well, that's, she just mentioned oracle.
Yeah.
Well, because or, dot com provides our oracle resources for us.
That's aside. I just wanted to see, think about, think about it.
Well, and.
Think about it.
The, uh, and I certainly don't wanna make extra work for anybody, so, um, but I do have the one question about, it's interesting that I wanted this to happen. It couldn't happen through open enrollment, and yet it did happen through open enrollment by mistake.
Um.
Or. Well, not by mistake. It wasn't by mistake. It was because we had an issue with the setup when we did the new tier levels. And the, it was like the eleventh hour, the day before open enrollment, we had to take the fast formula off, which makes them choose two plans in order for everything to work before self, before we went out to open enrollment self-service. So it, it wasn't a mistake that, that it happened that way. It was the only way we were gonna do open enrollment that next day is to take that fast formula off. And as I had.
So you knew that there could be people that would sign up for dental only as a result of that?
We knew that could be an issue, but we've gone through that and already have audited, and there was just, I think.
So that one person hap- what happens to that person?
We'll have to reach out to that person and let them know that they can't have dental only this year.
No, I, I think my opinion was, and I said this, was that they should be allowed to keep it.
I don't think we legally can do that because we didn't make it available to anybody else. Our benefits have to be offered.
You said you did, because you knew that there was a possibility.
But, but we never told the employees that they could enroll in dental only. He just happened to stumble across that.
What if fifty people would have signed up for it?
They did though. We've already done through the audit. I mean, the.
We're, we, we love hypotheticals. We're lawyers.
And, and I guess.
Well, they, you'd be stuck with it, just like you're, you're stuck with this as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
You can tell somebody.
We talked to Tracy Yerkes if we want to, but I think.
We're told, employees and all of us are told that, you know, this health insurance thing, lock it up, get it done. This is the deadline. If you don't do it, you're S O L. So this person, whoever has come in, got, got the insurance that he or she wanted, locked it up or anything else. Now you're saying the rules don't apply. We can yank it back. I don't think so.
Yeah, but they picked, they picked medical, uh, PPO plan and they picked the HSA plan. So when, when, I mean, they've done this now since we've done open enrollment. They are able to do that. So we have to go through there and audit. And if you picked HSA medical plan and you picked the PPO plan, I'm gonna reach out to you and say, which plan did you really want? So it's a, it's a natural thing that we do is go through this audit to make sure, you know, that you get what you.
That's a different situation.
Yeah.
And, and I will tell, if you pull this thing away from this guy, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna have the union coming after you like you wouldn't believe it. That's my opinion.
Are you talking about Aron's way that was sent your way?
Yeah. I mean, let's not name names, but.
He may not have opted for it at their recommendation. So although he stumbled upon it that he could elect that coverage, we sent him, him their way. And if he opted not to take that coverage at their recommendation.
I think he did.
Well, then he could.
I spoke with him. I spoke with him during the open enrollment and ma- made him aware that we were not. At that point, my knowledge was that we were gonna do it until January of eighteen. So he was clearly aware that that was the situation.
But he took it. He took it. He got it. And so, I mean, I, I'm just telling you, I think you're gonna have more problems by taking it away now than you would if you just let him keep it and then just move on and tell everybody else.
So this one particular person, you're gonna let, do that, and anybody else? I have a handful of other people that picked medical.
They, they have, they, they could've done it too during that little loophole time. They did.
Okay, but as I explained in the email to you, Patrick, the fact of the matter is there is, there's a handful of people, a handful, maybe ten, that I have somebody that picked medical only, employee only. And then they picked employ- uh, then they picked, uh, employee and children for the vision and dental. You know, unless there's some clear-cut rules on what it is, because our rules have been that it's the same tier level, uh, for all plans. So th- there is so much that you're gonna open up, so our.
I don't think so, because you're talking about this one specific issue. And that is that you had to take away, take something off the software in order to have other things work, knowing that there was a possibility that people could take dental. This guy took dental and now it's over. Open enrollment's over with. And now you're gonna go back to this guy and say, oops.
Okay, but all of our documentation, if you go out to self-service, it tells you you have to pick the same tier level. All of our information says you have to pick the same tier level. So we've expressed that with all of our materials for the two thousand seventeen open enrollment.
Commissioner Blau?
What, I wonder from a financial point of view, setting all these other rules and everything else aside, what, isn't it advantageous to us to have someone choose dental and not medical? Because we don't have the exposure for medical, so we're, we're paying, you know, nineteen dollars a month for dental or whatever it is. It seems to me like, uh, uh, we should, we should allow people in. Maybe, I'm changing my mind here, that maybe we oughta figure out a way to let in these people. Like, I didn't know you had another five people that are interested in that or whatever. Uh, I, I just think it's, um, in the employee's best interest, and I know it's not easy for us, but it's easy for you. But, um, I mean, I think it's a better thing for them to be, uh, choosing dental and not have to take medical, because medical exposes us to a lot more costs.
I, I ha- I am not gonna argue the point with anybody, because I'm fine with all of it. What I'm not fine with is that the whole population of the employees were not aware of this. And the only reason that this handful of employees picked different tier levels and different plans and not equally the same is just because the fluke of being able to go out there and do it because I had a problem. Okay, if, if we had notified everybody, if we had had a head start on this prior to open enrollment and figured out what the rules are, what is exactly gonna be allowed, that the whole population of employees had the ability to do that, I'm comfortable with that. I, I, I don't, I've never really been opposed to it. But first recommendation came from Aon about us keeping the two plans together. So it wasn't really, I was putting up a wall to say, I don't wanna allow this. I just wanted some time to be able to do some testing was my issue. Because oracle is a complicated.
No kidding.
Program. And, you know, even when I've done major amount of testing, I still have issues that come up, you know, that you don't think about. So without having that comfort, first of all, of, of the testing process. Second of all, the opportunity for all employees to have that opportunity during the open enrollment. That's, that's where I, I struggle with this, uh, uh, doing it any other time other than in open enrollment time. And the timeframe that it would take to get information out to say, okay, we're gonna allow everybody to go do this again. I, I, I honestly don't know that I can, it's just too much work.
Does Delta sell insurance to anybody? I mean, people?
I don't know if they have individual policies. I think they're primarily a group, um, product provider.
If we found out, for example, that Delta would sell individual policies, why couldn't we go to Delta and say, here's five people, you know, we'll pay eleven percent of the premium or eighty percent of the premium? I mean, maybe that's another way around it, or maybe we don't even go to Delta. Maybe we go someplace else and say, we want insurance for these fifteen people and we'll pay eighty percent of it.
But we already, that's the issue. We already have it. That's the thing. We already have it. It's our process that doesn't let them get it, because we have it set up so that they have to take medical first to get it.
So, but what I'm saying is if the pro- the process is holding up, why don't we try to find a way to run around it and say, let's go to somebody who sells dental insurance and say, we've got ten or fifteen people who need dental insurance and, um, these are our limits. We'd like, this, this is what the parameters are. Uh, when you sell them a policy, we'll pay whatever the percentage is, eighty percent, we'll pay. And then at the end of the year, you know, we say, okay, now you're, now you're through with that. You wanna come onto our, our general, come into us, come into our plan? Maybe that's just a way around it, because I'd like to get them the coverage.
And, and that's, that's an alternative, but I think I kinda agree with, uh, Commissioner Borges in that it's kinda the same difference. I mean, if we have them on and we wanna provide them coverage, um, then we can just leave them in Delta, Delta. I didn't know there were five.
Well, I, I'm, we are not completely through the audits. And they're not five that just picked dental. I have, I have somebody that picked employee only medical and employee plus children for the vision and the dental. So, I, you know, there, it's a few of them that are across the board, you know? They, they may pick medical for the family and they didn't pick vision, but just for the employee. So we're, we're still auditing that. And so I don't know how many of those people did that. Some of them may have did it by accident, just because that was open and the plans weren't tied together like we've had in the past. So if you went and picked medical employee only and you went to try to pick dental family before this open enrollment, you would have not been able to do that. It, it would've aired out.
Well, let me, I'm sorry to eject myself so much, but I don't think it's the same difference. Of course, I don't like that phrase anyway. But it's not the same difference, uh, because, uh, this is, we would, we, we would be going out and buying a separate policy and participating in it solely, totally separate from Delta, be a different company. So it's not the same difference. It's, it's insurance. Dental insurance is what it is. And then we can have it expire so that if they want to join us, they join us through another channel. The other thing is, the other day, I was doing something with a, a credit card and a, an American Express card. Actually, I'll tell you the truth, you'll, you'll all believe this. I found it on my desk. I thought, what the hell is this? So I turned around and activated the card. I just tried, and my God, it was a live card. So I live, set it all up, and part of the deal was I had to read down through all these agreements. You know, I promised that I'll, you know, you can go to mediation and sue my face off if, you know. Anyway, so I just clicked it, and they said, red comes up and says, you can't do that. You have to read the deal. So you pushed down, I pushed it, and then, then I got to agree. I'm saying that maybe our apps should prevent this sort of thing from happening. That if you don't do one, two, and three, and four, that you don't get to go to five. And so if you're doing one, two, and three, click, go to five, it says, wait a minute, you can't do that. That, maybe that's part of.
And, and that, and that was how it had been previously. And the, and the reason it didn't happen this time was.
Separate the policies?
No, it was purely because we had to create a fourth tier for Blue Cross.
The what?
We had to create a fourth tier, another offering tier, under Blue Cross Blue Shield. And because of that, we ran into, I, what Kathy and Kalpana, who's our oracle resource person, they ran into problems the day before. They were working like at two o'clock in the morning.
Sure.
And the only way they could get that tier to work was to remove the restrictions that talk about what you were saying.
Well, then let's make oracle pay for it.
Let me ask a question.
Well, wait a minute. Commissioner do the first question.
Uh, well, to me, it, it seems like we, we've gotta pla- I mean, open enrollment is closed, eh, for the year. And you're trying to catch up with all the oracle things and everything. And you're saying, next year, we can do this in an orderly fashion and let employees know during open enrollment what options are available to them, just because we have one employee who was told that this may not work? And we say, well, then we gotta change it. What about the employees that then come to us and say, I wanted dental only, and I didn't get it? How come he got it and I couldn't, when I wanted the same thing? We're picking up a new can of worms.
But we opened that up, Claire.
But when we had to take the oracle formula off the day before.
Right.
Okay, so one guy came through and we told him that this may not work, and he said, I wanna do it anyway. And so now we have to change our policy?
No, 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 no. He, he was one who wanted it changed and was told, no, you, we can't do it.
Okay.
And then the discussion was, yes, we can. When should we do it? Don't do it this open enrollment. We're too busy. So wait till the first of the year and we could do a special one, or wait till the next open enrollment. So this guy comes, he enrolls, and because of what they had to do, he was able to pick dental only. So he actually got what he was out to get.
Right.
But it was by mishap, really.
An error.
But it was because we took the thing off for it to work.
But.
And he also came to me that day after he had enrolled to tell me, 'cause I was at corrections, that he enrolled. And I specifically said to him, that is gonna happen in two thousand eighteen. That was an error. We had a problem. We had to take that connection off. Yes, I spoke with him.
Changing our policy just because one guy got through on an error and other people didn't get through. I think the can of worms were opening by this, by not allowing other people that wanted the same thing to have what this guy got. I, I think our headaches are gonna be worse than if we say, hey, open enrollment twenty eighteen, you're gonna have this option. And we get all of our, our nuts in one.
I agree with what you're saying, that if to, to wait, i- if it's to wait till two thousand eighteen, that's fine. What I have a problem with is that because of what we did knowingly, we did, a guy got the dental only. Now we're gonna go back and say, sorry, you can't have it. That's wrong.
Yeah, but he kinda knew how he got in and that that may be coming, and it's also wrong to the other people that wanted it but didn't get it.
I saw Kathy. You were shaking your head.
No, I spoke with him. I, I, you know, and, and, and I have spoke with this gentleman a couple other times. The first time when he wanted dental only a couple years ago, and Aon recommended not to split the ti- not to split the plans up. They're a benefit consultant. We, we took their advice, you know? And then last year, um, I don't really remember what happened last year, but when we ta- brought this discussion up again, um, this past year, it was just too late. Okay, so, again, at the eleventh hour, you know, we're, I mean, we literally in the middle of the night working on oracle to get open enrollment to go off at eight o'clock in the morning on October twenty-eighth. And luckily, it worked, but we had to take the connection of the medical plan and the med- and the dental plan off in order for it to work. And, and I, I was at a loss. It's the last thing I wanted to do, but that's what happened. He went out and did his open enrollment before I went to corrections, because I was at corrections that one afternoon, uh, the following week. And he came up to me and said that he enrolled in the dental only. I explained to him, I had a very lengthy conversation. There was four or five other corrections officers standing around at the same time. I explained to him that wasn't gonna happen. It was going to come off. He was not gonna be able to get dental only for this open enrollment. The plan was to do it for open enrollment of twenty eighteen. Him and I had some discussion back and forth, and he felt that Mary Ann had made it happen for him. He specifically said, Commissioner Mor- Commissioner Borges has made this happen for me. So I explained to him again that it was gonna happen in twenty eighteen. So he was very clearly aware, and I could pull some of those other corrections officers that were standing there, that he was aware, from what I was explaining to him, that that was not going to stay.
Okay, very good explanation. Thank you. Commissioner Blau?
But then why did it?
Right.
Pardon me?
Why did it stay?
It didn't stay. I've changed it since. We're going through the audit process.
It doesn't have insurance now? It doesn't have dental?
No, because I was waiting for this discussion here before I reached out to him.
Not pulled it away yet, as of right now.
Well, it does, it's not effective till January of twenty seventeen.
Somebody talk at once. Does he have the coverage now?
No. Because it doesn't go into effect. All the stuff that we just did, none of those changes, that open enrollment doesn't start.
Till January first.
Until January of twenty seventeen.
You made the change to his selection before the, for this meeting, or have you held off and not made?
I have not made the change on his record to this point.
But he still has it. So he still has it.
Still has it.
For two thousand seventeen.
He's still elected it.
Right.
He's not covered right now.
It's a secret what happened today.
He's not.
He will be covered in the, with the first of the year.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's all about.
So we need to get direction from this committee. What do you wanna do? Do you wanna change his selection back to what they think it should be? Or do you wanna let him through? And, but what you're saying is not just him, there would be other people as well.
I, I.
A lot of people come forward.
Well, I, so then that's what you have to decide.
We don't know.
The things that.
We don't know that. She just said there's five.
Well, that, that I'm aware of. We're still going through the audit. And what we would normally do in this situation, not that dental and medical were different tiers, but if somebody would have picked both medical plans, we would reach out to them, you know, 'cause they, we didn't have those two tied together, okay? So, meaning that you could only pick one medical plan. You could pick the HSA medical plan, you could pick the PPO medical plan. Yeah, during your open enrollment. So we see, we're going through this audit, and we see somebody has PPO and they have the HSA. Yeah, during your open enrollment. So, we see, we're going through this audit and we see somebody has PPO and they have the HSA. We reach out, we call them and say, which plan did you actually wanna pick? It it's no different this audit that we're doing now. We're doing the same way. With the exception of now, we've got people that have picked vision for family, medical for themselves. We would reach out to each one of these to say, hey, you know, we're gonna make the change of the plans, split them up for two thousand eighteen, but for two thousand seventeen, you have to have the same tier level coverage.
Well, I know how hard you're working. I went to you to have you have you sign up for me because I'd still be sitting there trying to figure out how to open the app. So, I appreciate it and I told you how much I do appreciate your work. But we did something that allowed this to happen, whether it was accidental or whatever. We took the Aon's advice and split the policies or whatever you said. But if somebody picks two policies somewhere along the line, that system should have said, hey, wait bozo, you can't have both. You know, choose one. And same thing with the dental. The other thing I'm thinking about, while all this talk is going on about coverage and everything else, I'm thinking about a couple of things. One is a parent with child who needs braces. I'm saying I don't know what the coverage is. And I'm also thinking about an old person like me with a wisdom tooth that's throbbing and has to get out. I mean, these are real life things. They're not buying dental insurance uh, just to carry a car. They're buying it because they need dental care. And so, I mean, I I think we have to do everything we can to uh, see that our employees do get the coverages that they want and they need and they're willing to participate in. And I really regret that this puts terrible pressure on your office, cause you have enough, plenty of enough. But if we could do something to try to help you, hire someone who knows something about Oracle, for God's sake, or whatever it is. I think we need to honor this fellow's choice and we need to, if we do that, honor the other five or twenty-five or forty-five who want dental and the other thirty-two who want vision. I mean, I I just think we need to do that.
I I I actually, and I'll be glad to check with Teresa, but I actually think that because these are county sponsored plans, if we're going to do this, we would have to open it up to all employees, because otherwise, we're gonna have somebody say, well, because I didn't happen to try it, I'm not gonna get a chance to have the coverage. And then I think we're gonna have other issues. It'll be bigger. That will be bigger.
I wouldn't do that.
Because you've got problems with Blue Cross. I mean, you you're already stretching it to get the Blue Cross coverage in place and time. You'll get it done, but that's that's a full-time thing as if you had to open up this whole thing again.
I can't do it.
I I but I what I'm saying is if I am an individual that says, just because you didn't tell me I could take this coverage and now I know that this person over here in my same department is taking this coverage and you didn't offer it to me and you have to offer it to me, because I'm the same as this person.
Did you ask for the coverage? No.
Now, I will guarantee you, this is a corrections officer. Every corrections officer will know that this individual got to pick this plan themselves and it 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 will it would definitely be an issue.
But did every other correction officer ask for that? No. Did this guy? Yes.
And what was he told?
He was told, no, but it got through.
He was told no, so now we have to tell everybody we're gonna open it back up and say yes, because this guy went ahead even though he was told no?
I I just I just would hate to see the county be faced with a charge of discrimination in benefits because they weren't offered coverage that someone else was offered. Because we didn't publicly, we didn't publicly announce that they could get this coverage this way.
But we didn't know it, did we?
N- I didn't know it, no. I don't think any of us, I think I think uh, in Kalpana and Kathy's defense, the dot com person, in their minds, when they took that fast formula off in the eleventh hour, uh, I you know, in the middle of the night before open enrollment began at eight o'clock, I don't I I think in their minds, they thought that if anybody elected this way, they would just contact them afterwards and tell them that it was an error, an error in our system.
They made a mistake.
An error in our si- that ma-
And I'm just glad they're not counting ballots.
It it wasn't done in it wasn't done intentionally.
I know it wasn't done intentionally, but it was done. You know, I'm sorry if a gun went off and shot the guy in the head. I'm really sorry. I didn't mean to kill him. Well, it's still manslaughter.
But our policy is, the policy hasn't changed, that it's the same tier level for both plans. That policy has not changed. So, it wasn't like we made a change in the policy and didn't tell anybody. The policy is still the same tier level.
One of one of our employees or a a some contracted employee of ours made a big mistake that allowed this to happen. And we are the ones who have to live with it, not that although we could sue him, I suppose, if we get to sue sue them. But I mean, we a mistake occurred and to the advantage of an employee and others didn't ask. If they had asked, they probably would have been in the same boat that he was. We've had twenty-five of these people.
So, um, so just just and if we go this route, that's fine. I mean, it's obviously the commissioner's decisions and it. So, it but down the road, a month from now, when the word gets out and we have an employees coming forth saying, I need dental insurance or I need vision insurance and I didn't know that I could sign up for it, are we gonna turn those people away?
You know what we're gonna do? We're gonna publicize highly a deadline. If you wish to buy dental insurance only, if you wish to buy vision insurance only, you have until December nineteenth at four P M. to notify us.
No.
And then if they come in on the thirty-first, I didn't get it. Well, the deadline passed, bozo. We set up a deadline.
I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm saying, set up a deadlines and then if they don't apply for it, they're out.
Commissioner Duda.
That's reopening open enrollment and it's going against our own policy.
No, it's not open enrollment.
Okay, but are we changing our policy? Here's my question. We gave we gave one policy out that went against our policy. We told the guy when he got it, that's against our policy, not gonna work. So, now we change our policy because we did that?
Well, how do you get it if it didn't work?
Well, I don't know how many times we have to go through it again, Mike, but the point is, we have a policy that says everybody, this is how their insurance is supposed to be. This guy is not. And so, that's how we change our policy is because a mistake happened. So, all of a sudden, our policy now is they can be whatever they want? We no longer have the policy that you have to follow the same tiers?
And actually, here here's what I think. I I think, one, we're um, probably overthinking what could possibly happen. And two, I think I'm not for reopening open enrollment. I am not for that. But what where I have the problem is, and even if it's those ones Kathy that are picked uh, medical individual and family dental, whatever those were. Some of those are gonna be because they didn't get it. It was they were just confused. Some of them are gonna say, yeah, that's what I wanted and it allowed me to do it. And here's where I have the problem, that we knew that making the change we made was going to allow employees to make those choices. Even that went against our policy by making that change. I get why that change happened, but it happened for those employees who, for whatever reason, thought, yeah, I'm gonna try it and pushed it and it worked. But we know it. It wasn't a mistake. It wasn't a glitch in the system. It was we intentionally did that. So, even if it and that's how we explain it. If word gets out and says, well, that employee got dental, well, there was a glitch. But we're changing the policy and it's gonna be fully vetted in two thousand eighteen open enrollment. Then I think we're covered. Then I think we're okay. Claire.
And so, I go, well, that one guy's dental policy shaped the counties, how we how we function here. This seems so simple to me. We told this guy, next year, you'll be able to do this. And if we just stick with that, everything is nice and simple. To say that he's got to be allowed this policy when other employees ask about it and we're told, no, you can't have it. Boy, are we setting ourselves up for a lot of trouble by going that route. Why not just say, wait till next year, stick with what we've already told this guy and and maintain our policy? Don't change our policy because a mistake got made. And so, that's how we dictate what our policy is gonna be.
But it wasn't a mistake. That's where my problem is.
But I did explain to him it was a mistake. I did explain that. I had a lengthy conversation with him, so he was clearly aware of it. And he was clearly aware that I it was going to, he wasn't going to just be able to get dental only.
Karen.
Yes, sir.
What is your recommendation to us as commissioners, based on what you've heard and Claire just stating his idea?
I I think, first of all, I wanna say, I think this is a very difficult situation. The correctional officer, I spoke with him, um, you know, in September and uh, explained to him at that time that we don't split them apart. But if that was something that we wanted to do, then he should reach out to some of the commissioners, which I believe he did. So, you know, part of that, that's where that all started. Um, at this point, my biggest concern, you know, I guess if we want to allow those these one or five people to continue um, forward, um, I think the biggest heartache I have is that it is that we're not providing, we're not announcing and providing the same coverage. Yes, the person found it by accident, these five people, that's what they did. They found it by accident, whether they tried it to see if it would work or whether they just clicked it in error, you know, the tier levels. This was the first year I did open enrollment with Douglas County, cause I've always had insurance through my husband. And so, it it is not an easy, it is not the most easiest process to go through. Oracle is not always very user friendly. Um, and so, I think these people picked this, you know, whether they, in this case, the correctional officer may have tried it because that he was hoping that he was gonna be able to get that coverage. So, and when it let him do it, he thought he had it. And he communicated that to Kathy. He said, I I got the coverage.
So, the short answer, and so Commissioner Boy, what I ask is what Karen's recommendation to us? Not that we're gonna take it, but I wanted to hear your recommendation to us.
My biggest my biggest concern, I mean, my biggest my recommendation would would be that we stick to our policy and then we do an if we wanna do an open enrollment, then we do another special open enrollment later in the in this year. If we feel it's really important for these individuals to have their insurance, if we think that that is something that absolutely we need to do. My biggest concern is that we're gonna have, if we let these few people through, that and I can guarantee it, because we see it with a lot of other stuff. We're gonna get phone calls into our office from employees saying, well, I know this person in my office got to have this coverage and I wanted it and nobody told me I could have it. And we're gonna end up with some very upset employees at that point.
Commissioner Boy.
That's why you tell them, set up a deadline, plenty of time out and make sure everybody knows it. Every every three days, you send them an email, every three days, every time you mail something to them. Have their bosses go around and say, did you know that you can get dental insurance only? Call Karen. No, I mean, set up a deadline. And that way, there's if that to me is the fail safe in what you're talking about. That if people know there's a deadline, then that is a perfect excuse. The deadline was, you know, December fifteenth and today's seventeenth, I'm very sorry, but the deadline has passed and you were told of that. We sent out seventeen emails to that effect. I'm saying the deadline is your is your thing that saves you from going underwater. Uh, but.
Well, the deadlines have passed because as as Commissioner Duda said, open enrollment's closed.
No, I'm talking about another deadline.
Oh, starting new, okay.
You go ahead and offer this and somebody says, well, then if somebody's calling, you say, well, I know they got it and I wanted it and I didn't have a chance. I didn't know about it. That's why you give them all, you give them plenty of time, plenty of notice, this is a deadline and, you know, put it on the parking garage at three o'clock. They'll see it when they're leaving.
We would have to do a special open enrollment.
I'm just saying, the deadline is the way to cover yourself. But you know, I I think, you know, Patrick is right. We can't say this guy doesn't get it. He's got it. And I think it isn't right, because the system was broke and he got into it. Uh, he's got the insurance now.
No, he does not have the insurance now. He does not have the insurance now at all.
Excuse me, the first of the year.
Okay, but he's 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 clearly aware that he was not gonna have the dental insurance, because I had the conversation with him after he did the enrollment.
So, you told him he will not have it in January?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
So, he knows.
Yes, and I have.
You're gonna have issues either way. You're gonna have issues. Some employees are gonna say, well, I want it then too. If you take it away from him, then you're gonna have an issue with him potentially. So, you just have to decide what's the bigger, what's the bigger headache? And I mean, I agree, if the bigger headache is to allow everybody else to open up, I agree with that. Um.
Nothing.
It's up to I it's up to the board. I mean, I guess the thinking about it and hearing all of this, I'd probably just say, tell him sorry.
Which I did.
And then and then let it go. He 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 may go to his union rep. He may be getting a cough from the union rep and he might have to deal with it at that point.
Commissioner Boy.
Okay, here's another deal. Let's do it. Why don't we do this? Why don't we find out from a private company, uh, how much dental insurance costs and buy a policy for him and give it to him? I mean, that's damages.
There's the there's there's no damages to be had, because we're sticking to the policy. You know, our poli- the policy didn't change. That's the whole, that's the whole thing. The policy didn't change. I I understand, Mike, and I've explained that. And I also explained to the individual person that we're speaking about that he wasn't gonna have the dental coverage. You know, I just think everybody needs to be treated fairly. And if you do this for him, he the rest of the population isn't going to be treated fairly. If if they wanted just vision only, I'm go- I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna have a good amount of people that'll just want vision only, because they might have coverage, medical and dental outside of here, but they don't offer vision, the vision plan. So.
But they didn't pick it and they didn't.
Because they stuck to the policy.
loophole that we created.
Right.
By changing the software program for them to pick one only. That's the problem that I have with this. And I don't I think we're, and maybe I'm looking through my rosy tinted glasses again, as my kids say, but I think we're blowing this up to a level that it doesn't need to be. And so, to me, if there were folks, again, by our doing what we did, chose something that was against our policy, then we just kinda have to swallow it and say to others who call that we allowed this, it went against our policy, but we're fixing it for next open enrollment. Because the other ones, I can guarantee you, plenty of the employees that picked what they picked, picked it intentionally. The handful Kathy that you're gonna audit are probably ones that just really didn't understand what they were picking. So.
So, if just hypothetically, if we had a situation where the software for our license plate registration had a glitch and if somebody was able to click through that and they were able to get their license plates for free, would we make them then go back and pay for those license plates?
If we intentionally did it?
Well, if if it just through a software glitch, the same sort of situation.
No, it's not the same thing. That's not the same thing, cause we intentionally did whatever we did for whatever the good reasons where we did it, we did it, that allowed the employee to do that. So, you're saying you're talking something completely, you're talking a glitch.
Well, what if the what if the people that run the system took something off because they thought it was the right thing to do to make the system work in similar situation? Would they then have to back go back and pay for those?
Text. Well, my opinion would be no, because we did it. We caused it.
Well, if I could add my concerns, it's the state law that you have to license your car. So, if somebody did it, probably somebody would get fired. Uh, but the point is that you can't start giving away license plates, cause first of all, we don't control it. We do control this health insurance and all the benefits that go with it. That's the difference to me.
Sure.
Commissioner Duda.
So, we're going to let an Oracle glitch that allowed something that went against our policy to change our policy? So, our new policy now is dictated by Oracle glitches?
See, that's where I think we're, we have a difference of opinion of what the glitch is versus not a glitch.
The the two scenarios I see are one guy that got through by accident that was told this isn't gonna work, next year you can have it. We're so afraid of him that we'll say, we'd rather have an open enrollment, go against our policy, change everything, allow everybody to re-up again, because that's simpler than this one guy that was told this wasn't right, you weren't supposed to get it, next year you can have it.
I'm not afraid of anything.
No, because they do the work. Why would we be afraid of it?
Well, it's in my opinion, if it's it is what it is, because we caused it, then let it be.
Well, okay, an Oracle glitch then is determining our policy now. At what point do we get to wade in on this policy or do we? Has it already been determined by Oracle for us?
No. Well, according to them, what they did.
And according to us.
According to the staff that did what they did, in order for this to work, that was what caused all of this.
This is a computer glitch. They they told the guy this wasn't right, because it goes against our policy. They didn't change our policy. We're allowing our policy to completely change now because of this. We're allowing our policy to completely change now because of this. Talk about making a mountain out of a molehill, we've got a small situation here which has been handled. The employee was told, it was a glitch, next year. Okay, we're making a mountain out of a molehill, we're gonna have a second open enrollment and, and change all of our policies.
No, we're not, no, we're not.
Well, if we're going to allow this to all of our employees, how do we do it without having a second open enrollment?
That was actually the discussion in the beginning, was, do we have a special one at the beginning of the year for this? Or, do we wait until the open enrollment for next year? That was really what the discussion was about. But, the issue then was, which I thought it was an actual mistake, until I was told that it was intentional on our part in doing what we did, that allowed the employees to pick, different than what our policy said. And that's where I have the issue. So, you know, again, if members don't wanna allow the employee to ke- keep what they picked because of what we did, then that's fine, I just don't agree with it.
Don't we all agree that we wanna treat all of our employees the same? I mean, in terms of insurance?
Sure, sure.
I, I, I mean, that's our, our goal, and so, if we're going to allow this one person to have it, even though he was told he can't, but if we're gonna say, "Go ahead, now you can have it anyway," we have to offer it to everybody. How do you do that without an open enrollment?
Well, Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think it's by notifying people that if you want these insurance coverages...
Which is an open enrollment?
No, that...
It, it has to be. We would have to do an open enrollment, so they can go in and elect.
Who says?
Oh, we won't call it that.
Did you say that we're offering dental, and we're offering vision?
But it's a special enrollment for dental and vision.
Okay, so it's not an open enrollment, they're not getting medical insurance?
No.
Okay, but it's not open enrollment, you're getting involved in semantics here.
Well, it's, it's an enrollment. We just wanna call it open?
It's, it's open for certain coverages, uh, but, you know, in any...
Okay, so a partially open enrollment?
Yeah.
An open enrollment, excuse me, an open enrollment for vision and for dental.
Right.
And you have a deadline of, uh, December thirty-first.
So, we are suggesting a second open enrollment?
No, not an open, not totally open, but for these coverages. So, if you want these coverages, you can apply, and the deadline is thirty-first, and then if you don't apply, then it's clear. I'm just trying to treat everybody, I'm trying to treat everybody fairly. You said we're afraid. I'm not afraid of them. And, and when you say "we," do you mean "we them" or "we us," you know? I mean, I think it's, if you mean "we us," I just wanna be fair, uh, with all the employees.
I think we all agree with that.
And this though, I don't think there's any disagreement.
Okay.
So, and, and as far as building the mo, you know, a mountain of a mole, though, I think that has occurred, kind of on both sides a little bit. But, so you're not all wrong, but, uh, I don't know how to treat this guy fairly. I mean, should we, what would, what would happen, Kathy, if you called him and said, you know, I mean, if you made it clear, that he doesn't have insurance?
Which I did, which I did.
So, what'd he say? "That's too bad, I'm gonna have it anyway."
I'll call, I'll call Commissioner Ferguson, 'cause she'll, she'll make it happen. It's exactly what he said to me.
Well, we'll see.
So, there you go. There you go. And again, when I thought it was a mistake that was made, and Claire, I know you're not gonna like it, but when, that, when I understood that it was a mistake by the software, then that put a little bit different tone on what I was thinking. But, when you just said it wasn't a mistake that we did this, then, yeah, then I have a different opinion. But I, and I understand why you did it, that's not the argument. But the argument to me is, is that we intentionally did something that went against our policy.
We didn't say they could do it. We just took down a mathematical formula that was incorrect.
But it still, they, here's the outcome of doing that. This is it. This is the outcome that, that was doing it. So, really, in the end, all that we need to decide is either you allow the employee to keep it, or you allow the employee not to have it, and let's move forward. And, so, I kinda hearing...
My desire naturally, Mary Ann, would be to stick to the policy that we have today, and that's where they have to pick the same tier level in medical and dental as a package, and then make a plan for January of two thousand eighteen.
And I agree with all of, I agree with that, other than
And go back to these...
the fact that what, what the employees that picked what they picked this year, because of what we did, should be able to keep what they have. And we should own up to what we did and move forward. That's all, that's my position on it. So, if others think that we shouldn't go that route, then hey, you know, the will of the board, that's fine, I'm okay with it. I'm just saying what I think, and that's what I think.
Well, my preference would be to go back to these people that made a different change against the policy. Let them know that this is our policy, that what, what is it your desire? Do you, do you want medical for your family and dental, you know? So, the few handful of people that we have, I've, I've already spoken to the, uh, individual corrections. He's clearly aware that he was not going to get dental starting January first of two thousand seventeen. So, it'd just be these other individuals, and maybe they are by error or by mistake. But at least make them aware that, you know, we're still with the same, picking medical and dental at the same tier level, and in January of eighteen, it'll be open up to pick whatever plan, whatever tier level you want.
I get all that, Kathy, I do. I honest to God get all that. I still have the problem that we caused what, whatever reason, we caused it. And we're not owning up to it, other than saying, "Oops, we had to do it, no, you can't have it." That's my problem. Commissioner Boyle?
Are there, there are other people besides Estella that got, thinks he got the dental, now he thinks he doesn't have it? You, you're talking about other people that have to be told they've got, they don't have coverage they thought they signed up for?
Well, they, they, they're kinda all, all, all across the board. I've got, I, I, two others that I'm aware of, that they picked medical for the employee only, and then they picked dental and vision for the employee and children. So, those would be those, you know, I think there's three or four of them that I'm aware of right now. We're still going through the audit process, uh, and those would be those individuals that I would contact and say, "You picked different tier levels for your different plans, wha- what is it you really want? You need to have the same tier level for all the plans." That's what we would do.
See, I, I'm not technical at all, so tier levels mean nothing to me, and I don't want an explanation.
Okay, employee only, employee plus one, employee plus family, that kinda, those are tier levels.
Okay, so when you choose employee only, you can only do employee only, but how do they get into the employee plus family and stuff?
Because of what we did.
Yeah.
Because of the mistake we made?
Yeah, well, because of the intention, right. Because we took out a piece...
And they may, you know, just like Karen had explained, it's the first time she's been out there audit, and I know it's overwhelming for employees. I, I, I've sit with them, you know, four or five days, I'm out in, in the field, and I sit with them. Uh, Matt, it's the first time he did, it, you know, it's hard for us, we deal with it every day, to see how come this, how come you can't see how easy it is. But, it could be just a mistake that they did pick, you know, 'cause you got the employee only over here, and you got your checkbox over here. So, it's possible that they could have not checked the right box, and they really want medic, medical, family, dental, and vision. And just by the problem that we had, they didn't pick the right level. So, I would reach out to those people anyway, because maybe they're not wanting what they picked. I don't know what to stop it.
So, we're going to enforce the policy on those other employees, and say, "You picked the wrong tiers," but on one employee, we are not going to enforce it.
I, I don't know what you guys are gonna choose. I, my, my...
So, every employee that signed up for different tiers, because they were allowed to sign up for different tiers, they got it? Okay, so they got it, that's our new policy?
Yes, that's what they, what Claire...
But then how do I know that that's what they wanted?
They may not know that they actually did that. That's what I'm saying, is that when Karen...
Okay, but, but if they say, "Yes, it was on purpose, but I signed up for these different tiers," then despite our policy that says you all have to be on one tier, we're gonna start allowing this now.
But despite our policy, we made a change that allows them to do it.
So, so our policy just changed. We never got a vote, but our policy just changed.
No, that's what this discussion is supposed to be for. So...
Well, I, I need some direction today, because, you know, the, the Blue Cross file already went over, so whoever chose medical during the open enrollment, that file already went over, so ID cards can be sent out. I have to send, the Pay Flex file's already been sent, so those that are enrolling in flex spending, you know, once that's done, there's, you know, they can't make changes, those are IRS regulations. The, the dental, you know, we'll be updating the dental file, and then we'll be sending electronic for the vision. So, I, I have to have this figured out, you know, sooner than later, because it will hold up everything, and I'm gonna tell you, if the employees don't have ID cards before January first, it's gonna be awful in our office.
Yep, maybe we could do a, a grant compromise. Uh, then Claire will go, "By God, Mike Boyle's right for once." I think, what if we were, and I know, I'm talking money now. I, I think we need to let you go on with what you're doing, as bad enough as it is. I mean, it's been very, very difficult, probably worse than usual, particularly switching, okay? And I, I really, I don't envy you. And of course, I'm the one that always goes to you and tracks you down, as you do mine, so I understand, I appreciate it. Maybe what we ought to do is, this handful of people who wanted dental only, or maybe vision only, for whatever reason, what if we were to say, uh, "We'll give you, um, three hundred dollars, uh, in cash, and you go, go buy next year, sign up for it, but here's what we can do for you this year. We'll give you three hundred dollars and go away." What do you think?
I, I...
Is that enough?
I, I, I think if that's what the commissioners are willing to do, then we would suggest that they file a, a cl- a claim.
And Commissioner Boyle, the only reason I would say no to that is because we already have everything that they were asking for in place, that we wouldn't, we don't need to do that. So, but, again, you know, I think we know where Claire is, you know where I am, and...
Well, I'm halfway back and forth between, you know, both places. I mean, I, I understand what's going on, and I, but if the guy is clear, if it's clear, he doesn't have the coverage, that's one thing. And the other five people or whatever were told, "No deal." And you do have others that have made double choices, that you have to tell, "You can't have this and can't have that," so I mean, you're kinda telling them the same thing.
I would be interested to know if that's really, I would be interested to know, uh, it, truthfully, if these people accidentally did it, or if they intentionally did it.
We, we can report that back.
I'd probably with Claire, just so you know.
I, we can report that back, 'cause I can appreciate you would wanna know that.
Yeah. Okay, well, kill the messengers. We got that handled quickly. Oh my God, you think we're married here for all this stuff, huh?
Well, these are, these are, these can be very difficult, because of affecting people's lives, so...
Well, eh, and I'll just shut up. I just had, I just, you know, we, we do more damage this way than the other.
Okay.
Okay.
I can see your side, and I'm not totally convinced one way or the other. I really am not. I mean, someone chooses that stuff, but this, this, the four of us don't make that decision.
I have no freaking idea.
Yeah, well, they need direction as to whether or not...
We don't, we don't, we don't know what, where we're at right now.
I'm saying, I said, they need direction as to know if they should allow the employees to keep what they chose, if that indeed was what they intentionally chose, or do we just say, "Oops, you know, sorry, you have to wait till next year."
Kathy explained it, I think the guy knows, hey, you don't have it, there was an error, and I think we leave it at that?
We have a policy, and then go with change our policy, and we maintain it.
And all I'm saying is, I get the policy, and I get the reasoning behind that, but we aren't living up to our end of what we intentionally did to allow the employees to get this, and we're now saying, "Well, we had to, but oops, sorry, you don't get it." To me, that's wrong. But again, if the, if the board does not want to allow them to keep what they chose, and again, we don't even know how many it is, then that's fine, I'll live with it. Folding my nose, but I'll live with it.
So, the policy stands.
So, tell me he doesn't get it.
Well, Commissioner Boyle?
A little follow-up, I'd like to know, I mean, I, I'd like to know, and I wanna treat this guy fairly, but if he already is aware of all this, maybe that's a moot question, but I do wanna know about these other, what Commissioner Ferguson talked about, the, the numbers of people that chose this, chose this, and chose that, chose Bill, Claire, and all that stuff. I'd would like to know what that was and how all that pans out. I'm not sure this is the final decision, but I think if you look at it and come back and tell us as soon as you can, how many people are involved and what happened, particularly, you know, and I'm not trying to, you know, I guess it's partially being Catholic, somebody has to be punished. Who? Well, I mean, we were responsible for the Crusades after all, so, anyway, I'm not saying come up in his heads, but, um...
Yes, please, I'm fond of mine.
I'm not saying that either.
No, but I...
Not.
But I mean, did Aon do this, and I mean, did somebody do this who should've known better?
We did, we did it.
Who's "we"? Us, runs with Oracle.
Yeah, the, the, the situation was this.
I mean, did Oracle, somebody at Oracle do this, a contractor?
No, it was a dot-com employee that removed the fast formula in conjunction with conversation with Kathy. With Kathy, and, but, but, but it was a recommendation from dot-com in order to do this, because the, the, the option was this. Either, this is the, this was, this was the scenario. At, in the middle of the night, they either decided to do this, or they had to postpone open enrollment, which we, which, remember, was starting the next morning at eight AM. Or we had to postpone open enrollment for another two weeks in order to do the testing, to figure out what was happening with this one tier that wouldn't work for, because of the Blue Cross Blue Shield change.
Why is that happening?
And, and if we would've waited another two weeks, we would not have been able to get the flat file to Blue Cross in order to get our employees set up for them to have their card effective January one.
Go back the other way. Why wasn't that system tested two months before this happened?
Because we didn't have a signed contract from Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Well, you should've done, they should've done it anyway, in anticipation, maybe there's a change coming, how do they know?
No, I mean, we didn't know from you all whether or not we were going with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There should've been a test of the system. I don't understand, I'm not a computer person, but you can't, just like an election, you know, you don't think he walked in there and started testing the system the day or two days before, you know, or two weeks out? You know, they have to have this thing locked in, and they run test after test, you know, to make sure this is supposed to...
But we didn't know, we didn't know what tiers we were gonna have with Blue Cross, we didn't know all of that until we had the board meeting, and you all approved the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. So, we, we, there was, at that point, we didn't know we were gonna be changing tiers.
This could happen again, then.
And we, we were, we're, we're hoping that by making the changes in twenty eighteen to allow people to do this, these issues will not be an issue in the future.
At least these issues.
Yeah.
I'm real disappointed in that computer stuff, you know?
It's, it's, it's a nightmare.
Nothing that a good old cocktail would solve.
Oh, believe us, we, the... I understand. I'm very frustrated, so, I'm very frustrated sometimes too, so, um...
When I became mayor, L Bay said, "You know what you need to do? Bring back shoeboxes and index cards." I think L was right, just go to the index, other, pull up the index card.
Sometimes it seems like it's simpler, for sure.
Well, uh, so I guess, just so they have clear direction, um, as to whether we stick with our policy or stick with letting them have what they have, that's what I guess I'm waiting to take here.
Well, it's a two-to-two votes, a policy, just...
Well, we don't vote, though.
No, I mean, but two opinions and two opinions. We kinda just let it go the way they started it, and apologized to them, and told them he didn't have it.
Unless you wanna take this to the board, we don't have to discuss all this.
Well, we don't have the time to do it, so, um, you know...
I think that, can I say something, one, one last thing or not?
Well, I'll have the last word.
Okay.
No, I will.
No, you... See, we, we're getting good at this.
When I, I mean, I, when I first started talking in my position, that's, you know, how I felt about the situation, but I do think that the county attorney's office would advise that the safest thing is to do what they're suggesting. Right or wrong, fair or unfair, I think that, that, that's what Trace would advise. I believe that that's the case.
Well, and all I'm saying is that we're all too quick to make sure that we point out the wrongs everybody else did, but when we do something, we wanna just sweep it under and, "Oh, we can't do it." That's wrong. That is wrong of us, to be doing what we're doing.
To have run with that formula that was wrong would've been wrong. To allow a formula on there to employ, let employees put all this stuff in
I agree.
and give them false information, that would've been wrong. I think they did the right thing in pulling a malfunctioning formula off the website of the eleven tower to make sure that employees aren't misled.
Well, they wouldn't have left it, we would've had to delay it for two weeks, so I agree.
All right, I, and we're good.
Hey, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We agreed with that.
You're putting that on my mouth.
We do, we agree with that. I agree with you on that.
Okay.
It's the latter that I have a problem with.
Last one, someone must be punished.
And it's mine.
I'll wash your car and grab it. Okay, I need it.
Okay, the last item is the legislative priority discussion. Now, we had a lot of this discussion, um, just through board meetings, but we also had the discussion at the tri county retreat of just what our, what our issues are, not necessarily what our priorities are. So, we need to now prioritize these so we can let our lobbyists know. And this is kinda the same process that we have used in the past. Yeah, it's front and back.
It's front and back.
It is. Behind you. So, you, so, um, what we have done in the past is we've gone through and we've, um, started to check off what we wanna keep as a priority or what we don't wanna keep as a priority, um, or add support to or not support to. So, the first one, the standing shared support items, these are the three that we have worked with other counties, um, individually or as a whole as NACO. So the first one is support justice, criminal justice reform addressing rising jail costs and mitigate the fiscal impact of county jails as a result of LP six oh five. And we say yes or no, do we wanna keep that as one of our priorities? And then I'm assuming-
Yes.
Yes.
Eliminating the unfundered, unfunded, underfunded mandates on counties by states. Examples, eliminate the responsibility counties to pay for HHS office space, probation space, et cetera. And I think we still stay on board, knowing that this is gonna be a very tough, again, year to get anything financially from the state.
I'd like to add, and crime lab expenses. Because the state of Nebraska pays for all of the crime lab expenses in Lincoln, the state of Nebraska, for the state patrol and they don't pay a dime for us, the city or the county.
That's wrong.
So we ought to put them on notice.
Great, good job.
Okay.
Just so you're not talking something crazy on them.
He never does.
Then the next one, counties to share proportionately in the automotive sales tax revenue collected by the county treasurers. Now, this was proposed by Crawford. It's one that, again, we, I think, continue to be a part of, but probably not real hopeful of anything, but we still stay.
Well, Ernie's, Ernie's opposed to it, so, that's dead, but we go ahead and do it.
But we can, shared support ones, we can still lend our support.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we find, um, a way that doesn't throw this in Ernie's face that is some other way to collect money that would amount the same sort of amount, you know? If we're missing a million dollars, try to figure out some way to, for example, when you go to a restaurant, everybody complains about the, uh, the restaurant tax that was put in by Suttle, two and a half percent. Look at your bill next time because it's actually nine and a half percent. The state takes seven percent, the city gets two and a half, plus the city gets two, so the city is really getting four and a half percent and the state is getting five and the county gets- And I'm not saying add, but why don't we take, peel off, uh, one penny from the, from the state's sales tax on restaurants? We oughta gig them. That's what I'd like to try. And I bet if we did that, we wouldn't have to worry about the nine one one thing. Someday, one of, someday, Ernie might-
I'm sure the state will gladly give up someone's tax base.
I think it'd be good to point out the fact they're taking, you know, that the city is taking another action.
Well, maybe you and I should talk to Ernie and see what he would be agreeable to supporting and then we would go with that.
I'll talk, do us through that.
Okay.
So that being a little-
Well, it'd be rearranging that a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so the two thousand seventeen legislative items, um, is the first one. Now, these are ones that have either been on the table or they were mentioned as we went through our board meetings this year. Um, support a legislative effort to provide statewide uniformity in the collection of nine one one surcharges. That's exactly what we were just talking about. We do wanna keep that for now unless we can work a better deal. Um, support a legislative initiative to expand Medicaid coverage to individuals in the county jails custody until their sentencing or post adjudication. Support requiring private health insurance and insurers in Nebraska to continue to provide health coverage to insured individuals in the county jails custody until their sentence or post adjudication. And this is one where I think we still beat the drum on this because when we had conversations with this, they're thinking that this is going to be an increase in cost to the state. What I'm saying is, these people already have Medicaid, they have their Medicaid.
Yeah.
But the state is suspending it upon them entering our system. So they're not getting, they're not getting it while they're in the jail, which could happen, but they're not. They have it already. We're saying while they're in the jail, allow them until they're sentenced to keep their coverage to cover their medical costs while in our jail. So there really isn't any additional cost. So we have to do a better job of trying to explain that and it's the same way with health insurers. If you're insured under Blue Cross Blue Shield, you're insured. So when you go into the jail, you should continue to be insured until you're sentenced because at that point, you're still innocent till proven guilty. Support an initiative to revise the section or appropriate sections to allow county fair board members to serve at large rather than being bound that not more than two members of the county fair board be residents to the same town, village, precinct, city, blah, blah, blah. And, um, I, you know, we can keep it. I don't know if we wanna say that that's an absolute priority if things get rough, but, um, we can keep it on our agenda. Um, support an initiative to revise the section, appropriate section relating to the printing of election ballots to eliminate the current requirement providing for the rotation of candidates' names.
And that's even pretty near it because there's a lot of feeling about people being first on the list, which rotation came from nineteen oh six, well, prior to nineteen oh six. They rotated the names because the voting public, just like when they put in the electoral college, were not smart. They were not able to read and write. And so what happened is they'd go in and vote for the first person. So they just rotate them to screw people up. They also rigged voting that way, chain voting. They'd, uh, I'd give Diana a, a half pint, I'd say, go in there and bring back ballot number six, because there are a whole slew of them, she'd bring back the blank one. And I'd mark, uh, you know, Claire Duda on it. And then I would give it to Patrick and say, put this one in there and bring me back a blank one. And then I'd put Claire Duda on it and then give it to you, the same deal. So it's chain voting. So that's why we still to this day can't put our own ballot in the box. They make us put it in that folder and they look at it, put it in. And there's initials on the bottom of it.
No, they changed it this year.
No, they didn't.
When I went out the door, they had you put your ballot in the box in a hundred and forty-
It's in an envelope though.
It's in an envelope that you put it in.
I'd never heard of that. Anyway, so the other thing is, what we need to do is make sure we make it clear that, uh, if you do a way of throwing facial of names, it's not a rush to file because otherwise, uh, whoever files first is on the ballot. No, we, you have to draw names out of a hat for county board and if you have an opponent, you know, you draw the name out of a hat. Comes out on top. And there's other state laws out here, we have to be careful, that say that the name on the top of the presidential is the same as the number of the person who got the votes for governor, so that's why we had a Republican at the top of the ballot all these years. It's based on the previous vote for almost, and so now next year, when the governor runs, it'll be, oh my God, we're gonna have the top vote getter of that party is gonna be the, the governor of candidate. So it's Republican again, so that's just the way it is.
They can do it like they do in baseball. Have a Republican versus Democrat all-star softball game.
Anyway, it has to be done pretty carefully. Anyway, I, I'd like to participate in that.
Yeah, okay. Um, support an initiative to revise, uh, section known as the county development law or appropriate section require the state of Nebraska to fund all TIF-backed projects as part of Nebraska statewide responsibility for climate development.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's good.
Support an initiative to revise to increase the penalties for the crime of an assault on a correctional officer.
Okay.
Um, support legislation to expand county ordinance-making authority, allow counties containing the city of the metropolitan class to build the tax laws. This one's been on the table too for, I don't know how many times, but, um, you know, maybe again, it's one of those that isn't necessarily the absolute top go-to-the-war with, but-
How would that work though if we had that? Could we set the speed limit on, in the city?
No, they'd be very specific on what they would allow us to, like the one that they expanded it to was the solicitors.
Okay.
Of that type of thing. Um, they're very specific on what they would expand the ordinance authority for or to counties. Um, support legislation to remove as duty of county treasurers office the receiving, storing and in-person issuance of license plates and require the state of Nebraska to issue by mail all license plate in uniform and statewide manner, preferably from a single central state facility. Again, I think that's one that we have conversation about and see if there's momentum, but not, not anything, uh, that I think will die for. Support an initiative to revise or appropriate section to allow counties containing a city at front class option to choose on a case-by-case basis whether to pursue a five-week redemption period for tax foreclosure purposes on properties that are abandoned and delinquent on taxes. This was one that I found and gave to Marcos, um, that they're doing in, um, I wanna say Minnesota. Is that right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, I thought it was very intriguing and maybe something that would benefit us for sure. I don't know if the state would see it that way, but, um, something that we could see when we talk at the senators' breakfast, um, if there's any willingness to, um, to, to work on that.
You know, years, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, this is a real big issue Ben Gray and, and it really wouldn't be bad if we touched base with him to see, I, I mean, it'd be nice if we're on the same, this is a real big issue.
That'd be great.
To him, and, and I would like to be working in conjunction with Ben rather than against him.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not asking about that.
I would too. Years ago in my prior life, we put a, we were, the state was trying to get ahold of condemned property, places that were rundown and everything, I was trying to get title to them so we could hold them up, put them back together for all the copper and everything was stolen and all the wood and everything. And so we put on the ballot a constitutional amendment, we got on the ballot a constitutional amendment, to, uh, accelerate foreclosure. Well, our timing was bad. It was the same time the agricultures went through another crisis and the agriculture community thought we were trying to steal their farms, so it failed. So I'm just, I'm just saying that this is a real long shot.
Okay. But I'll, I'll touch base with Ben to see if there's something we could work on together. So then this last one was kind of the hodge, 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 hodge? Of things that everybody at the county board meetings mentioned about or for when we talked about BOE or TRK.
Yeah.
And so, um, I think, again, all of these are ones that I think would better the system and we would just have to, um, again, maybe see during our senators' breakfast what their feelings are about any of these and see if any of them would maybe stick with them and then we would run with that one.
Okay, and I, I sent you an email saying I'd like to know what our talking points are so we're not all over the map saying, I think we have a bingo and stuff like that.
Well, this, this would be it.
Okay.
I mean, what we have to do next is we have to prioritize these.
Okay, you know what I'd like to do? I'd like to ask Tom Riley and maybe Klein to come to that breakfast and I'd like them to talk about what Tom just said, where they have criminalized graffiti to a felon, to a felon. And so that has jammed up, it's jammed up correctional, it's jammed up his office. So we need to ask the state senators, not, not be soft on crime, but to be sensible about it, you know? Uh, I told the governor Heinemann one time that, you know, you keep telling us to arrest a man over sixty-five with white hair and jaywalk and, and send them to prison for five years. When you do that, it's expensive. So I think we need to put on, have Riley come out and talk to him about, I mean, he's a, who knows, well, both of them'd be great, to talk about decriminalizing some of this stuff.
Well, eh, and I'm, I'm okay with talking about that, but what we need to do with this sheet, because this is ones that
Oh, okay.
everybody from the county board had said at one point or another. So if we say the top three, those we're gonna work on as priorities with NACO or with other counties and they just stay as is. These other ones, I would really appreciate if you could go through and send me what your top five might be, um, so that we can then have better talking points with the senators. But again, during this legislative session, I think we have to be realistic as well as to what we're gonna get. Um, and again, this is where Sean and Mike help too, but they wanna know from us what our kind of biggies are.
Yeah.
So if you could tell me what your biggies are and then we can expand on them a little bit better. Um, we can still keep this as our legislative agenda, but we just wanna prioritize that.
Well, I think it's really, uh, very important that you'd be able to stand up to the group and say, these are the things that we prioritize.
Yeah.
And where you think are very important.
And if it's BOE, you know, number ten, that's like one of the top ones, then that's good, okay, that we know where we're gonna go.
I think it is.
Okay. So if you guys could let me know and then we'll go through these again, um, when I schedule the next HR committee meeting and then come January was when we kinda, even though the legislature starts before we start, we put it on the agenda and say, this is kind of our legislative package. We know that there might be things that come up that we need to vote on or show support of or work against or whatever, that at least we have what our agenda is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other issue for the good of the cause or just wrong?
Lord, I hope not.
Was there emotion?
We don't have emotion. We're just done. We just can't vote. There you go.
No, that might keep waiting for emotion.